Perfect, perfect.
There you go.
Good evening, everyone. Take my blues off. Happy New Year to everyone. We'll call the meeting to order. If you wouldn't mind standing, please, for a moment of silent reflection and remain standing for Oh Canada. Thank you. Members of council, you've had a chance to look at items on the agenda. Is there any disclosures of culinary interest? Counselor Renault.
Thank you, your worship. I did declare a conflict in the last minute, in the last meeting of December 8th, so I will be declaring the conflict for the minutes. That was for Ali closing Q7.
Thank you, Counselor Renault. Adoption of minutes with that conflict so noted that the closed and regular minutes of the meeting held December 8, 2020, and the minutes of the budget meeting held December 16th, and the minutes of the special meeting held December 17, 2020 be adopted as presented. Moved by Counselor Dejarle, second by Counselor Edicio Spagnolo, all in favor. That carries unanimously. Thank you. Mayor's comments. Just a couple of short ones, but Happy New Year to council members and the viewing audience. As you may be aware, Premier Ford announced a second provincial emergency to address COVID-19 crisis effective January 14, 2012, 1:01 a.m. Please visit our website for more COVIDs, in our COVID section for more details. This is not something we should take action on. This is something we must take action on. There has been too many deaths and we must stop this pandemic. Too many people are having dinner with an empty chair. Please, everyone, let's help each other and do what we must to stop this pandemic. Presentations, extension of town branding, Liz Ferrano. Did I say that right?
Yes, you did.
Okay, Liz. Thank you. Welcome.
And I'm just waiting for Amanda to join us as well.
Okay.
I'm here.
Mayor Bondi, if I could start before they get started?
Yes, sorry, Dawn. Go ahead.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor Bondi and members of council. In June of 2020, the town was successful in a grant application in the amount of about 112,000 through FedDev Ontario's Regional Relief and Recovery Fund. This was administered through Tourism Industry of Ontario. And this funding aims to support businesses across Canada in COVID-19 recovery at a hyper-local level, encouraging residents to safely get out and explore their community. We took the COVID pause as an opportunity to plan ahead for the return of activities at the Volmer complex, to encourage safe attendance at the facility, including sport tourism as teams return to play. Over the past few months, we've collaborated with Douglas Marketing Group to create a new look and feel for LaSalle events that is consistent with our current branding, while infusing new design elements with positive messaging that will become easily recognizable as a LaSalle event. The new look, along with messaging and precautions when needed, will help encourage the public to return to our LaSalle events. This included welcome back messaging and signs that were used at the Volmer complex during the first reopening and will be used again once we do reopen. We also looked at our events and street pole banners, giving them a new and fresh look. This year, we will celebrate 30 years as being incorporated as the Town of LaSalle, and a 30-year logo was also designed. All of these materials are being included in a refresh of the big picture landscape, if you'll remember, was designed a few years back. And it's a tool that we use to develop promotional materials and campaigns that reflect our Living LaSalle brand. All of this together is bringing Living LaSalle to the forefront of our branding and communications. Liz Ferrano, Vice President and Creative Director, and Amanda Yara, Account Executive from Douglas Marketing Group are here tonight to take us through a presentation. Liz and Amanda, as well as Patty Fenero and I are available for any questions that you should have. Liz and Amanda, over to you.
Thank you so much. So Liz is actually going to queue up by sharing her screen to start our presentation. Okay, so thank you so much for having us. I'm really excited to be here tonight as a longtime resident. Actually, I've been a resident of LaSalle when it was sandwiched. I grew up here. I'm very passionate about the work that we have done, and I think you'll see that in what we're presenting tonight. So as Dawn noted in her introduction, we have reviewed your existing big picture landscape that was previously developed against your old plan and have provided some recommendations that would align with your 2020, 2050 plan, as well as bringing the Town of LaSalle, Living LaSalle tagline to the forefront. In addition to that, we've also looked at some of the key indicators as to provide you with communication support materials that would support that moving forward.
So before Amanda goes into the lead of the, the presentation, what I wanted to just bring to mind or to bring to the forefront is what that big picture landscape actually is. So this is a snapshot of that big picture landscape, and essentially what it is, is the divisions and the departments of the Town of LaSalle all segmented, but how they collectively and consistently develop the tools and marketing tools to communicate to the residents of, of LaSalle. And what we'll do is we'll go into each section a little bit more in detail. But this is a snapshot of that big picture landscape, and traditionally what it is, is actually a printed landscape or a printed piece of paper, but with, with the current environment, we've turned it into a virtual space. So we're actually presenting it to you in a virtual, virtual layout where I will bring up some of the materials a little bit closer, and we can talk a little bit about the design elements and strategies behind that.
Okay, so as with everybody, we have evolved with COVID. So what we've done is your previous landscape, there was a few taglines within there. We have brought forward Living LaSalle to the forefront, and I think that's important because it really encompasses everything that LaSalle means. So what you'll see is we've also integrated, we did update some of your positioning statements, and we included that in our presentation that was sent in advance. And you'll, you'll also see within the COVID messaging that we developed, it was important for us to show what Living LaSalle meant. So it meant, let's get moving, let's get playing, let's get to business, and let's get together, let's get back to Living LaSalle. So the messaging that we developed for the COVID-19 welcome back, which as we've taken a step back now, was really to introduce some more vibrant colors to show that living and that refreshed renewed view on life, as well as hide the many different things that the town offers its residents and visitors. So you'll see we have developed some social frames that can basically be used by the town as a template. You'll be able to update everything that's inside there based on what you want to promote. So let's get moving, could be the trails, it could be activities. Let's get back to business could be your number, your several business districts, as well as restaurants that you want to highlight. Let's get back together. Hopefully that comes back soon. You know, but we'll be able to show that in whatever form that comes, and let's get back to playing because there are so many different sports facilities, and I know my kids are really excited about playing at the parks. So really important to us. We've also developed some messaging that we've all become accustomed to seeing, which is those infographic icons about the safety for COVID. So what was important to us is developed something that was very clear, and that could be communicated regardless of what language you're speaking or reading. So all of the COVID materials have been developed and translated into French as well to ensure that it's conveyed to all of our main populations. So as we move over to the internal communications, one of the areas that we identified to, that one, that you guys wanted to focus on was employee retention as well as engagement, and really being able to celebrate the 30th anniversary. So throughout the BPL, you'll notice we didn't do a complete revamp of all materials because some materials still work the way they are. They just required a small refresh. So you'll see we've updated your email blast to show the 30th anniversary logo, as well as try to leverage a little bit more of a refreshed look on the waves. I also want to point out, I meant to mention this earlier, is that throughout the big picture landscape, you'll see that we've looked to standardize a number of your icons. And then reason we've done that is because we can use the seals, and they'll be easily identifiable on any materials that are moving forward on the cell. So if we're talking about events, we have a very strong events icon, and we have a similar icon that we're using for employee recognition. So Liz, if you want to go forward on that.
Yep. So one of the objectives was to refresh the stationary or stationary packages with the new wave, as well as integrating the 30th anniversary. So what you'll see here are some options for headers, footers, and media press releases where you can see how the 30th anniversary is integrated. You can also see a call to action where the Living LaSalle is also being a part of that corporate stationary to bring that to the forefront. We've also developed a signature and a refresh signature line with the upcoming 30th anniversary logo, as well as refreshed business cards where the backs could also interchange colors by department. We can include some of the corporate colors where some of the backs are red, some of the backs are gray or beige, as well as blue, just to add some of those vibrant colors in there. Another element that was added to this section was the department-specific business plan accordion cards. And within the rollout of the strategic plan, I think that the rollout includes department-specific goals, and what these are are accordion cards that would be developed for each department specific to their goals so that they could have them accessible. They're easily folded into a business card style. So this is a concept in the template for the specific business division strategic plan goals.
And that card can actually be used across any type of messaging that you wanted to do. If you were developing key messaging for any types of new projects, that's really a great tool to ensure that all stakeholders are on the same page.
And as Amanda mentioned about the icons and specifically to really engage staff and create a recognition program, we've developed this icon specifically for the employee recognition program, which is recognizing LaSalle employees' commitment. And you'll see we refreshed the social posts that we would create templates for to recognize specific staff, as well as a quarterly email that could go out that identifies some of the key achievements from, for those staff members. Now, the header and footer for this email blast could also be flexible and used for multiple emails throughout internal communications. And taking that employee recognition program to the next level is creating almost a library of some promotional items that could be used for onboarding kits, it could be used for thank you, it could be used to engage and continue to really motivate staff and their commitment. We have included some examples of local a package where you can give some employees a local gift cards to experience some of the local restaurants or shops. We have included here concepts for a journal, a little bag that they could be packaged in, as well as some 30th anniversary promotional items that could include a tumbler, a t-shirt, it could also include a pen with a message as well as some mugs. So the idea is, the idea here is to just create a library of promotional items that could be used throughout the year and are flexible to update and maintain. Now, as you, as we continue to this landscape, we have the celebrating LaSalle lands, or celebrating LaSalle section of the landscape, and we what we've done for the 25th anniversary, which was five years ago, we developed a campaign that profiled 25 people within the community now, and you can kind of see the side by side, and we're taking it to the next level with the new 30th anniversary icon and tying in some of the corporate colors back into the campaign and really creating a really a proud, you know, we're showcasing the different photos. There's a collage of the different things that you can do in LaSalle that really brings the community to the forefront within the 30th anniversary campaign. We developed a pull-up banner that could be profiled later on within the year. These social media graphics are animated where they could rotate through all the different seasons and all the different things that there is to do within LaSalle. This is an example of an ad or a poster, as well as updating the calendar cover with the 30th anniversary icon. With, with the celebration of the 30th anniversary, we wanted to implement, implement a timeline. And in five years ago, when we did the concept of the timeline, we envisioned it to be in an actual physical space, maybe along a wall where you could walk and really see and learn a little bit about the history of LaSalle. But in this rendition, we thought of turning it into a virtual space. So this would be a landing page that you would land on where it could include videos and any additional information on the 30th anniversary, but taking you to the next level that you would go into a portal, and I'll show you an example of what this could be, and we envisioned maybe three decades, you know, from 1991 to 2000, 2000 to 2010, 20, 2010 to 2020. And just to show you an example of when you access the timeline, it's a really, it, you become virtual, virtually embraced within each year, and these are just concepts of hot highlights that could come up within each year, and as you click on the year, we can incorporate specific videos, we can incorporate specific, you know, any information that would be relevant. And we showed some examples of going back to the original coat of arms and giving some history. And when we mentioned this to Dawn, and we had this meeting, it could even go further back and talk a little bit more of the origins of the Town of LaSalle. So as you go through each decade or each year, here's some key points. And then you'd go to the next decade and/or you'd go to some previous decades as well. So this is just an example of how we would turn that interactive, how we would turn a time, history timeline into an act, interactive component. So we'll go back to the big picture landscape. Um, I also want to mention before I forgot, forget is you'll see a few websites or web microsites that we developed within this big picture landscape with the intention of create, creating them on a platform that is livinglaSalle.ca. We confirmed that the URL is available, so we did secure it. So livinglaSalle.com and.ca are available to house some of these virtual microsites that we'll see throughout this presentation.
And you'll see as well as we go through the presentation, I think one of the biggest differences from our last big picture landscape to now is that this really packages what Living LaSalle means. I mean, I mentioned that I was a longtime resident. I think that right now, when you go to the Town of LaSalle website, you can find everything you need through several different places of navigation. But having a microsite that becomes a one-stop like hub where I can find everything that is helpful to me as a resident or as a visitor to the area from trails to what the history is, things I didn't know about that came across and talking to Dawn and your team. This really will help support that as well as, as Liz gets later on, you'll see how that can also be applied for businesses and restaurants too. So for quality services, there weren't significant updates to this area. I think the one key piece that we wanted to highlight, and so you'll see this basically is has, as it was previously. But the one key piece we did want to highlight was a lot of the infrastructure improvements that have been done throughout the town. I think that often we take it for granted. I know from my perspective, people come and they're like, oh, I'm looking at moving. And I said, you should come to LaSalle because our streets are like always plowed. We're the first ones. Everybody's great. There's great services. But what does that mean when I go into a facility? I look at it from the perspective of bombers always really clean. You know, my kids feel safe running in the hallways, and I'm not worried. But the other side of it is how things are being improved, and we're looking at climate, being climate friendly and very conscious. So one of the areas that we had recommended was also looking at a commitment to quality. So you'll see there's another icon here that Liz has developed. And the idea is we put something for placeholder, but the idea is, is that the, these would be blank decals that essentially would allow you to fill in what the improvement was for each, for each facility. So it could even be parks, it could be different recreational centers, it could also be municipal buildings or businesses where you've checked and noted, almost like a seal of, you know, we checked this and we've upgraded it. And that way, when residents are visiting or other businesses will also know your commitment to the infrastructure facilities ongoing. So for community engagement, this was actually originally positioned as active living. But again, looking at packaging LaSalle, there's so much more than just active living. There's that whole sense of community where we can walk to the, we can go to the grocery store, and I'm going to see somebody I went to grade school with, a Little League coach. But I'm also very proud of what we're doing. So I think what's important is to be able to have almost like a badge that we're from the Town of LaSalle. I know I always say I'm from LaSalle, you know. But one of the things I truly do, but one of the things really is to show that badge. So what we developed is a stamp that says we're a proud organization of the Town of LaSalle, and this shows the engagement from both ways. Residents are engaging, but also the town is engaging back. And so we want to show that it's something that's two-way, right? Because it's helpful for everybody. So the idea would be to provide some social frames, and this will help encourage your social engagement by having sports teams, book clubs. I mean, obviously now we could probably have like a Zoom photo go in there. But we could essentially start engaging people to share on social media on their own Facebook page and take a photo using these frames. I think, I just don't remember what was behind there. The other thing that we wanted to look at is also taking things more to a digital perspective. It's not to say that you wouldn't have a printed piece, like I have all my printed notes, and we do all of that. But I think it's also important to give you some longevity and some flexibility in updating materials ongoing. So we did take the activity guide, and it can definitely be something that's in print. And I know that we get our quarterly PDFs that are sent out, but another step that we can look at here is actually making it a digital book. I'm sorry, Liz, I'm taking your spot here, so you can go ahead.
One of the major changes in this section was turning the, you know, the activity guide into a digital framework again for a few reasons. One, it's easier to update if anything changes, and with this current environment, things are changing by day as we know. So this is just an example of a snapshot where we can take the activity guide to the next level and create almost an interactive experience where we can have introduction videos, we can have specific program videos, we can have little tutorials within the actual activity guide at the same time of, as well as promoting some of the different businesses and highlighting the 30th anniversary as an example to some of the spreads that we laid out in this section, as well as highlighting some of the COVID welcome back messaging. So it's flexible, you can update it on the spot. And it has an interactive component.
I think too, like one of the biggest changes I noticed was really changing things on the fly, right? So we had registered our kids for day camp for the week, and then everything was quickly turned, turned to virtual. So having things on a digital platform will allow you to update that. But the other piece is that you can also further engage with the community, and we can see what people are interested in. And then also thinking in terms of packaging, the Town of LaSalle, this all fits within that same microsite and can all live there as one cohesive package.
The, the, the other major change to this section was developing an annual report, and it could be an annual report, or it could be a community report, or an impact report. Flexibility for many things, but the idea is to really, now that the strategic plan has been developed and is finalized, this could really be the report on the key accomplishment, accomplishments from the strategic plan, highlight some events throughout the year, developing a year in review, and do this annually just to communicate to, to the community, to the residents, as well as staying, staying top of mind with other various levels of government. And you'll see here is just a layout of some of the spreads that the design and look and feel for the annual report could take on.
So within the housing area and business districts, one of the areas that was identified as having diversified housing as well as bringing the business districts together. I know that one of the things that was identified through the COVID, and essentially that is our primary objective is positioning us for moving forward, was that making sure that all of the businesses are complementing each other and that we're really able to showcase that to residents and visitors. So what we've done here is Liz has shown, is going to take you through what this could look like for local. But I just want to keep in mind that, you know, it's really a great resource for us to go and find any information. So, you know, where are we going to order our food from tonight? We really want to support local. I'm not necessarily always going to go to a social community group, which I often do. But it allows you to support other businesses as well, and really showcase everything that LaSalle has to offer.
Yeah, and in looking at the objective of creating almost a business district, we thought that the best way to really collectively get, bring everyone on the same page is through a microsite or a website. And again, this would live on the Living LaSalle website. And we'll just bring it in closer because it, websites can get quite long nowadays. So we developed a specific shop local LaSalle, really tying into the, the supporting local aspect where you can learn everything of where you can shop, dine, and enjoy in LaSalle. So as you, as the consumer goes through this journey, they can see the different shopping districts, whether it's the outlet mall, Malden Road or Front Road, where there would be a link to an additional business directory. And on the homepage of this website, you, we would want to feature some, some shops, some things to enjoy in LaSalle, highlight certain events, perhaps, areas where you can dine in LaSalle, and of course, we want people to invest in LaSalle where they can get more information if they're looking to open a restaurant, boutique, or retail shop. We always want to also include keeping people up to date. So there's some call to action to sign up to a newsletter with your footer. So this is basically another microsite that would live on the Living LaSalle platform.
So the idea would be as well that you don't necessarily have to create all new content. You can pull from what you currently have on your website and feed things back and forth. Much like you see with a lot of the educational institutions now for recruitment, they have like a beautifully skinned page that gives you all of the, the photos and attracts you to it. But then they still pull the information from your primary website.
Yeah, and we're tying in all those elements, right? The wave is one of those prominent elements that we've been using. The pops of color, as well as bringing Living LaSalle to the forefront.
So with quality of life, there weren't significant changes that were made to this, but there was an existing interactive trail map that was developed for the Town of LaSalle. And keeping with trying to get community engagement and businesses engaged, we really wanted to take this to the next level. So essentially what we've done is we've integrated a virtual component, much like what you're seeing us present today, where you'll be able to have 360 photos of, this is obviously not LaSalle, but you'll be able to have 360 photos that will highlight major landmarks along your trails. It could even be historical locations, and it can be several different areas through the town. So the idea would be is that we would be able to, the town itself would be able to curate a lot of the content for the major markers. But we would also be looking to the community to post things. So you have a lot of like social running groups, we have a lot of biking groups, you can see we enjoy the trail. So we've posted a lot of photos there, and it would just allow us to bring that online community to a place that's also living LaSalle.
Yeah, what I love about this is we can have prompts where we say, you know, what have you discovered on this trail? And have people being able to take pictures of the different wildlife or different things that they see and share, being able to share that with other people who might want to know what that trail is like, maybe have a sneak peek. I mean, nowadays, you know, with, with the environment, just being able to interact and really highlight some key, key fun information about each of the trails, how they connect, and being able to see some of the trail maps and the wayfinding that we developed a little bit up close and personal as well. So there's a, there's a lot of flexibility with the, with creating these trail maps as a virtual experience.
And like also, I know that there is a really, there's a Facebook group that has a quite a big following for LaSalle, and it's more community generated and populated, but there's every day, there's new photos of trails and what people have explored and discovered. I think it'd be a really great outlet for people to curate content there, as well as provide them with some social frames that they can share through their social media accounts. So the other piece is these are the examples of the, the icon that we created for the signature events for the Town of LaSalle. So of course, we have the Strawberry Festival, but we also have those other events that everybody really relies on and enjoys every year, which is our New Year's Eve fireworks, although the drive-in what didn't happen this year. We're ready for next year. And we also have the Last Call Before Fall and the LaSalle Night Markets. You know, our movie nights that we like to have. So essentially what you see here, so you can see that everything is very cohesive and consistent. And the consistency on there is we have And the consistency on there is we have, you know, the icon, we have a similar graphic and a color coded treatment. But also you can see the information very clearly.
Yeah. So what we wanted to create here was a signature look and feel for LaSalle events. By using the vibrant colors and taking that through all of the elements when anything, when we're speaking about anything. Event related. So you can cut, you see here as well as applying them to billboards, making them really, you know. Get, have them really featured throughout the streets and throughout the roads of LaSalle. We have an example of a poster or a full page ad as well that ties in that vibrant color code. And we bring that all the way into what the pull-up banners or the poll banners throughout the town could also be updated with vibrant graphics. We have a dual, we have a winter, fall, a summer, spring. Version of bringing in those vibrant colors and tying in the branding of LaSalle all throughout the town.
So this is essentially the end of our presentation. We do have the environmental responsibility, which was included in our last big picture landscape, as well as the economic development package, which already integrates many of those recommendations.
Thank you, Liz, Amanda. Hopefully soon your kids will be running around the Valmer again. COVID, but I liked it. Very interactive in the microsites. Interesting. Any council questions? Counselor Renner.
Thank you, Your Worship. I just want to say thank you for the presentation. It looks very, very good. I mean, it ties everything together quite nicely. I'm just wondering if the interactive booklet, are you using snapped? Technology or do you have your own?
We would look at different, there's a very, like there's a lot of softwares that, that you can use. So we would work with you on the best platform that works with you to develop that interactive component. Whether it's adding 360 within there as well as any video components.
Good. Thank you. It looks great.
Thank you. Don, did you want to have any closing remarks?
No, we're excited to move forward. I think moving Living LaSalle really to the forefront of our communications is exciting for us. It, it, it goes along every avenue that we do, whether it's services that we provide or events or programming. So it's a great way for us to make sure that the community knows exactly who they're dealing with when they see our branding and our events out there.
Thanks, Don. Amanda, I'm sure you're enjoying LaSalle. You've been here a long time. Liz, we'll get you in LaSalle as you can be Amanda's neighbor soon. Thank you, everybody. Have a great night.
Thank you. Take care.
Okay, delegations, Maple Avenue Lions.
Need a motion to receive.
Oh, I'm sorry. It's been a long time. It's a new year. Motion received. Counselor Renault and Deputy Mayor Milos, all in favor. That carries. Thank you. And I thought I had this down. Okay, so we have delegations. Are the delegates. Here, is, is Mr. Beck's going to say something first or are we going to have the delegates first?
I was going to say something first.
Okay, go ahead, Mr. Beck's, and then we'll have the delegates. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of council. The, the report we have tonight for. The Maple and Lions alternating parking recommendation. Just wanted to go through a bit of the background on where this report came from first. So we received a, a request from a resident requesting that alternating parking be implemented on. On Maple and Lions for some safety concerns, parking concerns, et cetera. So the way, the way that we deal with these is the, the request comes in. And we go out and review the area to see what, what the recommendation may be. And then we send out the notification letters to the affected residents. And give them a chance to come to council like tonight to speak for or against the recommendation. So in this case of Maple and Lions, we reviewed the area and. In typically in, in all areas of town, public works would like to implement alternating parking where we can. It's, it's beneficial for winter operations. It's beneficial for emergency services for access. And the way that we do it is we do the alternating parking in three-month blocks. So it's not switching every month. And the main reason for that is that it would stay on one side through your, your main winter months. So with that, the recommendation in this area is to, is to implement alternating parking on both Maple and Lions. And there are some delegates here to speak on the matter. And I am available for questions if there are any.
Thank you, Mark. Peter, did you want to say anything before we go? Okay, thank you. So we have Robert Derling.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Deputy Mayor Milos and fellow council members. My position on this issue is that I am for the alternating parking on Lyons Avenue and Maple Avenue. The first reason I think alternating parking would be beneficial to this area is to make traffic flow easier. When cars are parked on both sides of the road, this makes the job of first responders more difficult. Also in the winter, if vehicles are parked only on one side. It will make the, the job of snowplows more easier. Another reason alternating parking would be beneficial is because it is safer for pedestrians and cyclists. With cars only on one side of the road, cyclists and pedestrians are more visible and cyclists do not have to weave in and out of parked vehicles. The next reason alternating parking would be beneficial is that it's safer for drivers. When two cars are parked across from each other on either side of the road, it clogs the flow of traffic. When two cars are approaching each other, one car has to pull over and let the other car pass between the parked vehicles. I believe that this is an accident waiting to happen and it only takes one time for drivers not to be on the same page. And this will cause an accident. Thank you for your time and I hope my points on this issue are taken into consideration.
Thank you, Mr. Derling. Is Shaitan Berger here? I see him there.
Good, good evening. Sorry, I'm just going to switch screens so I can get my notes up here. Sorry. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak on behalf of my neighbors regarding implementation, implementation of alternate parking on Maple and Lyons Avenue. I am strongly, my neighborhood and I are strongly against it. And I'm going to go through a few points that kind of cover the situation and maybe some other concerns we're ignoring with this idea or alternative. So the current situation, I live on Maple Avenue between Thirst and Selkirk. There are 40 homes there. I don't know exactly where the other gentleman resides, but it appears he does not reside on the section of Maple that has sidewalks. Based on some of his descriptions. We, in these, in this area, there are 40 homes. There's 20 per side. There's also an average of four parking spots in each driveway and most residents have double car garages or even triple car garages. Most spots are rarely used by homeowners with a few exceptions. And I know mo, every neighbor surrounding me, including several professional police officers in the neighborhood, remove their cars during snow removal. Which LaSalle does not have a bylaw for yet, which they, a few years ago I inquired because I wanted to get cars off the road, force new removal. Whether they're on one side of the road or not, it still creates and creates issues for the homeowner to remove snow. Because the snowplow piles excessive snow in the egress and ingress of the, of the, entering the driveway where the cars have been parked. Second, I've lived in this community for 10 years. We have had constant construction. Maple has essentially done about five houses a year and the street was a slow build street. And now as the houses mature, the people are putting fences and pools in pretty about four or five a year. So construction vehicles during normal business hours have been a norm, but it's slightly dying down. Emergency vehicles, construction vehicles and public works vehicles, I've never witnessed an incident. Of where the vehicles have not been able to pass down the road. There's a special needs home across the street and over three to four times a year. That home has a, has a fire truck come because a smoke detector goes off in the home. And because it's a special needs home, it's required by law to arrive. And there's never been an incident. Our speed limit in our neighborhood is 40 kilometers an hour. And if people are actually driving safe, there is no, there is no reason you can't pull to the one side or the other to respect other homeowners in the neighborhood. So going to the biggest issue of all with this, especially between First and Selkirk. Is there are two homes in this neighborhood generating six to eight vehicles per home. Around the clock. So call that 16 vehicles. Alternating parking would make us share 20 spots. To do it properly, one spot in front of each home allows you a good sightline to get on and out of your, in and out of your driveway. And not have issues backing out with the adjacent home across the street. If you park two, it gets a little bit difficult. So I'm going to make for this example, I'm going to make one car per family, an example. So now we have 20 spots with alternating parking. 16 of which are regularly used between First and Selkirk by only two homeowners. That means of the 38 homes left, there are four spots left to share. For students coming home from college, families having reunions and just people who use their spot. So their kids can play basketball in the driveway on a, or so they can clean out their garage. Additionally, this parking strategy would give us, you know, sorry, as I said before, no ability to remove our own snow. When for three months, which would likely be someone gets the winner. For three months, the snow is being dumped in the opening with, making it difficult to even get to work. Lastly, there's other areas of Lions. There's landscape companies parking 25-foot trailers. It's a one vehicle per, per night. There's a utility on Lyons trailer. He owns several SUVs, skidoos. He's constantly parking a large 25-foot trailer in front of a people's home. So I could see complaints there. And then there's also business owners that have their commercial vehicles who are parked at the residence, which I believe are bylaws. My recommendation is to reject parking, alternate parking on Lions, but I propose some alternative. Save the money and not add the signage. Spend it on, on the websites that we just talked about. Limit on-street parking to one spot per home for overnight parking. Just obviously, maybe even implement a, after 3:00 AM in winter months, removal of vehicles. Neighbors can share their spot with adjacent neighbors if they need an extra one. And you display your house number on your dash and as long as your house number matches your house and you agree the car is supposed to be there, there's nothing to complain about. Uphold the street, homeowners agreement that we all signed when we built our homes. Restriction, commercial, business, vehicles, boats, campers and overnight parking in the neighborhood. Utilize Tacoma, First and Selkirk to park overflow vehicles beyond the one-spot home limit that I propose. And, and once again, display the house number that you're parking your vehicle in overflow parking for. If the town of LaSalle chooses to do alternate parking, per the councilman's recommendation. I would like to be, to this matter to be done equally across the entire town. This shouldn't be inflicted on any specific street. We're not, our streets weren't built in the 30s and they're not to minimum standards. The town of LaSalle building is all up to code. This is a, a young street. So it's as wide as any other street that you can pass that can, people can park on both sides. So my proposal is to essentially, if you're going to do it, treat every resident the same. And then I have no concern with the position. So thank you for your time. I do appreciate everything. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Berger. Peter, before I go to questions.
Thank you. Certainly, a lot of the comments are, that were provided tonight are valid. The, the town's process for parking restrictions is exactly what Mr. Beck's has said. They are brought forward to us in a complaint basis format, actively and proactively. As we get into new subdivisions now, we recognize that we need to implement these things sooner than later. And certainly, we tried to do it early on in the subdivision phase. As council is aware, there's a number of them that have come forward prior to houses being built and the signs have, have, have gone up. Unfortunately, during those situations, when, when it's active construction, a lot of signs go missing because they get pulled out because they're building houses. And we're going back to do it two or three times before houses are completed. So certainly as a proactive measure. Certainly that, that is something that we are well aware of, to, to move forward and try to do something like this townwide. As council is aware, there is a number of streets that have been brought forward for alternating parking. And those are the ones that continue to be brought forward on a request, on a request basis. Certainly, one vehicle per house is, is an option, but that is what is referred to as permit parking. So we would have to actively issue permits. We don't have a policy or practice for that. It would have to be enforced and have some form of permit. Certainly, if there is two houses that have these six cars, I, I think we would be putting those two houses at risk relative to one vehicle per house. I understand there's a community living house out, out here that has a number of vehicles. So certainly, special, special accommodations would need to be made for the number of vehicles that they may have from time to time. Certainly, what, what's, what's proposed for you tonight is a, is a remedy to a, a situation where. We want to ensure that an accident doesn't occur. We want to ensure that the fire trucks and ambulances and police vehicles can get to these houses when they are needed. We haven't had any instances to date from what it, from what I am aware of. But certainly we don't want to have to have an instance when something has been brought forward to us, to our attention. And that's why we're here tonight. With respect to implementing this particular recommendation before you tonight. So with that, counsel, if you have any questions, we're available.
Thank you, Mr. Mara. Counselor DeJourle.
Thank you, through you and to members of council. I did check in with the office at Community Living about the home that we have on Maple Avenue. There was a comment that we have 10 cars parked there all the time, which I thought was a little over the top. We do have four employees that work there throughout the day, four in the day, four in the evening and two overnight. And our two agency vans that we have there right now, one of them is respite and because of COVID, we don't have any respite places going out. They do have a parking plan in place and where it might get congested is at shift changes. Where, you know, they're moving cars out, moving cars in, trying to balance them off. But there should no, at no time should there ever be 10 vehicles for the community home. Just so that we can keep that sorted out. We have talked with the police department and the fire departments about parking.
Sue, you're muted. There you go. No.
Sorry. So we have worked with the emergency services to make sure that they can get in and out okay. That there's parking available for them if it's required. And they're trying to be good neighbors by not. You know, taking up all the parking spots at one place or, or one part of the street. So I just wanted to set those numbers straight so that people know that that's what's going on with them. So that's my two cents worth.
Thank you, Counselor DeJourle.
Just, Mayor, sorry. I didn't mean to interject. May I respond? Just to kind of explain, the home right now that parks their parking plan involves a vacant lot. And Mayor Bondi had helped us create that plan a few years ago and all the homeowners in this area are very happy with that plan. So we have actually not complained since that plan went in place. My proposal not inflicted on this area of Maple because the, the complaints are not there. There is one home at the very end that has four families living it, living in it.
Wow.
Yes, but they currently park where there's no houses beside them. And, and once it switches, they'll be parking in front of our homes again, which goes back to the issue that we had our original complaint. They'll stretch further down the street and they'll essentially be creating parking concerns for the neighbors that are actually, all which I petitioned are happy in these surrounding neighborhoods. So I'm okay taking care of the non-sidewalk side of Lions. The nine side, the nine sidewalk side of Maple, but the sides that do have sidewalks, I think in this case, the homeowners haven't been complaining to that degree. So I, I, and we're happy with the home and the situation, but I guarantee you the complaints will start again. The minute that the, they start this adjacent parking and we have to share four extra spots with our neighbors that we now share more of with. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Berger. Just for going further. We usually do not allow the delegates to speak after, once you make your point. It's just open to questions if a member of council directs a question to you. So it's, I'm just giving you that fair warning that the administration may mute your mic if you try to talk again, okay? Thank you. No, no, no problem. Just letting you know the protocol. Counsel, any other questions? Council, any other questions? Deputy Mayor Malash.
Thank you, Mayor Bondi. Through you to Mr. Mara, um, or Mr. Beggs, either of you. I know this probably sounds like a weird question, but is the entire street the same width? I drove down there to kind of get an idea of what it looked like, and it seems like I think it's closer to First, uh, which is further away from Malden, it seems tighter. And I don't know if it's just simply that there's more cars in that area, or if there's an actual difference in the size of the road. Is there?
Um, through you, uh, Mr. Mayor, I don't believe there is a difference. Uh, I would have to look at the engineering plans. Uh, typically, uh, when these both were built, um, that standard of the road cross-section was pretty consistent. Um, so I don't believe that there was any difference, but I stand to be correct on that. I don't have the exact plans in front of me um, at this point. Uh, maybe it's the houses are set back a little bit further, so it makes it feel a little bit wider. Or the sidewalks in that particular section make it feel wider, or street trees, or something of that nature may give that sense of openness. Um, but I just, I, for, for, uh, for what has been various by a foot or so.
Um, and I guess my only other question would be, obviously, certain parts of that subdivision have larger lots, which obviously they have larger driveways. Um, and is that maybe why we're only experiencing this car issue in certain areas of that street? Because I didn't find it that bad. Mind you, nothing drives me more crazy than when you're trying to get down the street and there's cars parked right next to each other on both sides and you can't get through. Um, so I, I don't, I don't know how you move through subdivisions like this when some people are fortunate enough to have a longer driveway that fits six vehicles compared to the one that fits four, but wait, only two, because there's a sidewalk in the middle. And, you know, you, you get concerned about what you're implementing. Will you agree to these things is where do you, now that I have a household with a, an additional driver, you know, where do you park? Are you moving vehicles all the time? And this situation seems quite different with the community living home. Um, and like I said, there's another family with multiple people in one home. Where do all these vehicles go? And I guess that's my only concern is by implementing something like this, we're really, where are we putting the, the parked vehicles? Where are we moving them to?
Through, through you, Mr. Mayor. Um, any parking restrictions are not there to control the number of vehicles. Every ratepayer has the right to have parking on their, on their driveways, on the road. That is what they, they are residents in the town and they're ratepayers to deal with that. Number of vehicles, there is no limit on number of vehicles per, per, uh, per household. Um, hearing what this is, whether a house has six vehicles, it's there today, we, uh, regardless of parking restrictions, it's gonna be there tomorrow after the parking restrictions are in place. Just means after tomorrow, when the parking restrictions are in place, they're parked in a more orderly fashion to ensure that um, access to the road is maintained and no incidents from an emergency service, from an accident standpoint, and things of that nature um, occur going forward. And that, and that's really what this is. Um, typically, when we have these requests, we look at a starting endpoint for a particular road where these uh, requests come in. It may not be every block that had a, had an issue, but certainly when we go in and look at a situation, uh, you can see if I did one block and didn't do the other two blocks, it would look silly and start to not mesh well. So in this particular instance, it's a well, um, isolated, really, it's an enclave. There's three access points to, to Lorient. There's no through connections. It's really the people who live in this area. Um, given the current situation and the current pandemic, probably is now not a good time to drive out there and get an example of how many cars may or may not be there, because again, people are trying to limit their, their, uh, their visits and things of that nature. So um, it, it's a tough, it's a tough situation when, when you're trying to physically see um, some of that stuff, but certainly the, the notion of this parking, alternating parking is, is, is in place to deal uh, with any future potential concerns. Uh, especially when it has been brought forward to us from concerns with people having access problems and things of that nature. We want to ensure that, uh, we, we have, uh, something in place that, uh, we don't be held liable for, uh, not lucky enough or something.
Thank you, Mr. Mara. I don't see any council questions, but I just want to confirm some of the things that Mr. Beggs said. Uh, or maybe it was Mr. Mara. You said if you could, you would do alternate parking across the whole municipality. It's safer, easier. Uh, Mr. Berger said he has not witnessed an incident where emergency vehicles could not come through. Well, that's something we don't wanna witness. If an emergency vehicle has to come through and then we're blocked, then what happens? And, and every second counts. So not to put words in your mouth, but I think you said that, Mr. Mara.
Yes, I, I believe Mr. Beggs and myself have both, uh, both said that. Uh, proactively, we would like to see this. Um, again, we, we try to have a public component to this. So again, if we did it townwide, uh, it, it may be a little bit more difficult, but if a street-by-street basis, um, for the next, uh, little while of council was wish, wished to do so, uh, certainly that is something that we would, uh, certainly, uh, look at um, and, and bring things su- such as that forward. Uh, certainly, it will be in the areas that have fully built roads with formal curb and gutter, um, because they are the roads that are wide enough for parking. Uh, in the areas, uh, like in the areas off of Front Road, Sacred Heart, where there is no curb and gutter, those roads are actually not wide enough to allow for on-street parking. Um, so certainly, uh, tho- those are special situations where we have to deal with those. So certainly, in the developed areas that, that are currently developed with formal curbs and gutters, uh, certainly, we would love to, uh, to move forward in a proactive, uh, basis to, to do this, but certainly, we would look for, uh, council support in that, because again, um, we will, we will get a number of people coming forward who don't wish to have it and things of that nature. So certainly, uh, that is something that we would, uh, be happy to do if, if council wishes to provide that direction, or, uh, just deal with them on a one-off basis as well.
Counselor Carrick.
Yeah, sir, with that, sir, but generally, didn't we have a policy in the past where you need two-thirds of the street to, uh, to support something like this?
We did not have a policy on parking, um, restrictions, uh, with respect to how this would, uh, this would be implemented. The practice has been, just as, uh, Mr. Beggs has said, is we will typically get, uh, the requests come forward, uh, Public Works will review it in consultation with, uh, fire and police to see if they have any concerns. Uh, when we, uh, make a final decision on our report, we'll prepare the report. So this report was prepared back in November. Um, certainly, uh, we wanted to give the residents on the street ample notice, and that's what we did. Um, so certainly, we did that, and then they have the opportunity to come forward to speak for or against and, and have council hear their concerns.
Okay, Count, sorry, Mark, did you have a follow-up?
Yeah, I just, uh, so it's not a arterial road, right? This is a collector or is it a local? What are these considered?
This is a local road.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Renner.
Thank you, worship. Um, you know, there's a couple of things to look at, uh, on both sides, um, and both, uh, delegates gave good presentations. Um, I always go back to one of the biggest complaints that we get in neighborhoods in LaSalle, which is people drive too fast down my street. And, you know, natural ways of traffic calming is to add street trees or to add parking on both sides of the street. Um, and another thing, uh, to keep in mind is that, you know, we have seen these in the past, and, you know, most times we do go forward with them. But most times we see petitions and we see numbers. Um, you know, based on the, the information that's in front of me here, I see more that are asking for two-sided parking than I see that are asking for the one-sided parking. Um, I, I really don't see a community that's gotten behind the, the alternating parking. So unfortunately, I, I'll have to, uh, go against the motion tonight.
Counselor DiCio Spagnolo.
I, um, I completely agree and echo, uh, Counselor Renault's thoughts. Um, you know, they both presented great presentations, but at the same time, um, I do like having the cars on both sides of the streets, um, to control the, um, traffic. Um, so I'm sorry, but I'm gonna have to, um, second that motion.
Okay. Does somebody wanna make a motion either way? I, one question before we do that. Peter, you have here that LaSalle Police and LaSalle Fire concur with alternate parking. In that discussion, do they say overall they'd rather have alternate parking, as you and Mr. Beggs stated, you, if you could ma- wave the magic wand and make it all, our alternate parking? And I'm taking, I didn't speak with them, but I'm taking what you've done in the past. It's for safety of the residents that they want alternate parking. And I see Chief Sutton just, um, put his camera on. So did you wanna add something, Chief Sutton?
Uh, I'll, uh, defer to Peter's remarks if he has any first, and then I can follow up maybe.
Okay, thank you.
I was going to ask if the chief was on, that he should speak for the LaSalle Fire Department.
Okay, thank you. Chief Sutton.
Certainly, um, I, I think to your, uh, your direct question, um, alternating parking or only having, uh, parking in, in, I guess in our circumstance, having parking on one side of the street only, uh, certainly makes it easier, uh, for emergency services and probably with the size and length of the vehicle, more particularly fire service. Um, as, uh, as one of the delegates had stated, there have been instances in that particular area in the past. Fortunately, they've all been very minor. Uh, when we get into, uh, medical calls and structure fires and those kinds of things, it's not just a single vehicle that needs to pass down the street. Uh, we have, uh, two and three sometimes, uh, large fire engines. Uh, if we're there, EMS is there as well. Uh, and quite often, police. So then it becomes an issue, particularly with cars on both sides of the road, trying to navigate, uh, with multiple vehicles, um, so that we're not, um, excluding or boxing each other in. Uh, allowing as, as the engine arrives, allowing room for the aerial, uh, to arrive in the proper location behind it. Uh, and what we also run into with, uh, parking on both sides of the street is um, not everybody always parks up against the curb. And, uh, you know, as vehicles creep out further into the roadway, particularly in the wintertime with uh, snow removal, sometimes you can't get close to the curb. That single lane becomes narrower and narrower to, uh, to try to weave the needle, uh, to get, uh, uh, to get the vehicles through. So, uh, often when we're in situations where we have two or three trucks arriving, uh, it does become quite difficult when there's vehicles on both sides of the road. So certainly, from our practice, uh, limiting parking to one side of the road wherever practical on, on the streets that'll accommodate it, uh, serves our purposes much better. And uh, I think, uh, that's also the case with, uh, EMS, where even for a single medical call, uh, they often have a supervisor responding as well as the, the main ambulance. And, uh, on the serious medical calls, fire is usually tiered as well. Um, so again, you have multiple emergency vehicles responding to the same area. So, um, if there's anything further, uh, I'd be happy to elaborate if necessary.
Thank you, Chief Sutton. Uh, Counselor Carrick.
Okay, sorry to keep butting it a little bit. Um, so I'm not particularly supportive of this individual site right at this pla- present time. But what I'm thinking is maybe we should refer this back to administration, look at all local roads and come back with a report, so, so we're not picking on one street or two streets. We're looking at it all. Maybe we look at, we do a survey and ask the people, the residents on local roads. I'd rather do it that way. According to what the chief just said, it's an issue for everybody. So I would rather look at it as a broad-based approach as opposed to individually picking them off.
Deputy Mayor Malash.
Thank you. Um, one more question. Me too. I thought we had a bylaw in place for snow removal. Is, um, no, we don't? Yes?
We do not have a bylaw for snow removal, uh, in place. Uh, it is something that, uh, has been discussed for a number of years. Um, and certainly, it becomes difficult in some particular streets where there is actually no other area for, uh, for, uh, vehicles to park. So if we do still bylaw, there are some streets um, in LaSalle that they will have to find another neighborhood to park in and walk to their house. Uh, there's just no room. Uh, for, for instance, uh, uh, Merrill, uh, Merrill Avenue, uh, River Villa. Um, those are two streets that are always, uh, complicated to navigate through with, uh, with snow equipment. And certainly, uh, if we did no parking on, on those streets for the winter, uh, they would have no place to, to park. So it's been something that has been talked about, but again, if we're gonna paint the, the town with a single brush, we wanna make sure we're fair with everybody, and certainly that, it just hasn't been a bridge that we crossed as of yet.
Hey, thank you. And this question probably would have been for police. Um, is there not some sort of, and maybe, maybe Mike, you might know, um, about parking vehicles side by side in the road? Is there, is that not considered double parking against the law?
Peter?
That is, uh, covered off in our parking bylaw that there is only one vehicle parallel to the curb and it has to be so far from the curb. Um, certainly, in this particular street, that means parallel to the curb can be on both sides of the street, and they could be right immediately across the street from each other. So they would be meeting the intent of the bylaw. The purpose tonight is to implement alternating parking, which would be a supplemental update to the parking bylaw, which will say Maple and Lyons from here to here uh, will be alternating parking, and then that will be part of the parking bylaw. So it does speak to those matters in the particular bylaw, so they are not allowed to park one vehicle adjacent to the curb and another vehicle adjacent to that. They have to be up against the curb and so many within so many inches or foot feet from the curb. Uh, and certainly, when we get those complaints, uh, we would have to go out there. Uh, bylaw enforcement or police would have to go out there, uh, do the measurements and take care of those situations for enforcement.
Thank you.
Counselor Akpata.
Simply put, your worship, um, if I put my old life hat on, I agree with what Mr. Mara has just said and what the chief said. There's absolutely nothing worse than trying to get to a house in a cruiser, in a, an emergency vehicle, and having to squeeze between cars on both sides of the street. Uh, simply put, uh, before I moved to LaSalle, I lived in a neighborhood that was alternating parking. And I will admit candidly here, it was not the best thing until my neighbor needed an ambulance and the ambulance couldn't get down the street because of everything being blocked. So whatever we can do to keep all of our residents as safe as possible, I appreciate. And like I said, um, if it's going to be alternating parking or one side of the street parking, as the chief said, that allows our wider vehicles to get through, that allows a contingent of emergency vehicles to get through, which allows us to service the residents of our community without preference, without fear or favor. And as such, anything to get these emergency vehicles through the road to service the citizens, I'm in favor of.
Thank you, Counselor Akpata. My situation's very easy. We're gonna make decisions in four years of our term that's gonna make some people happy and upset other people. But at the end of the day, my philosophy has always been to minimize the municipality's liability. And in this case, if it minimizes our liability and saves a life because we have alternate parking and one person is saved, maybe it's a heart attack, it could be a fire, whatever it is, I'm, I'm for the alternate parking. It doesn't mean everyone's gonna be happy with that decision, but our decision's not to make everybody happy. It's to minimize our liability, and if we can help exactly what Ms. Counselor Akpata stated, and it saves one life, you said there's a guy that needed a ambulance on your street when you had it alternate parking. No, it's not the best for the residents. But if it's better for emergency vehicles and their snow plowing, and the plan is for, according to Ms. Mara and Mr. Beggs, they're gonna make a universal plan to cover the municipality, and obviously, that can't be done overnight. I hate not to do it, and something happens and poor family, someone gets hurt. Well, because, and they cannot receive the medical attention they deserve because of a blocked roadway. Um, anyway, I'm gonna leave it, Counselor DiCio Spagnolo.
Yeah.
Through you, I'm just wondering, can we make a motion to set a bylaw in place so that it's standard all through LaSalle for alternating streets? So that we don't have to come with this constantly for, you know, if we, so it doesn't come back to us constantly, um, at another council meeting, it's just gonna be straight across all through LaSalle for all residential areas.
Counsel, uh, Counselor Mara, sorry, Mr. Mara.
Um, certainly, uh, that will be, that would be a option for council to bring forward a council question and for administration to come back with a report to kind of explain how we can do that. Um, certainly, um, like I had mentioned, uh, there are a number of roads that would be included in that. There are probably a number of roads for other reasons that would not be included in that. Um, so for example, I, I just use Normandy, for example. Currently, Normandy is, uh, no parking all the way along, so it wouldn't fall into part of that. So we have to be specific on the various roads. Uh, but certainly, if that is council's wish to, to deal with it that way, uh, that will be a council uh, direction, and, uh, we would come back with a report to, uh, to kind of explain how we could move forward with something such as that.
Thank you, Mr. Mara. Counselor Renner. Thank you, Mr. Mara. Counselor Renault.
Thank you, your worship. Um, I appreciate the conversation, um, and like the banter back and forth. Um, I especially would like to thank the chief for, um, his input. Um, at the end of the day, it is really about safety. And, um, as much as I, I, I did say that I would not support, I will actually make the motion that we move on this street to alternate parking for the safety of LaSalle. And that we, um, ask administration to go back and, um, prepare a report um, that would, um, give us zones or, or give us options of, 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 uh, putting something more permanent, uh, in, in the future.
Okay, um, I see, uh, our CEO, Mr. Militia.
Uh, Mr. Mary, I, I understand the, the motion on the floor, but if we could just separate that into two different motions, it would be helpful from our perspective, just so we deal the, with the item on the agenda and then, uh, the direction from council.
Perfect. Uh, mover, Counsel Renault, are you okay with that? Okay, so the first motion is to go with the recommendation. We have a support, Counsel DeJourley. All in favor of the recommendation? That passes. Thank you. And on the second motion, do you want him to restate it, uh, Mr. Militia, or you're, you know what you need?
No, I, I think we do have the motion on our end here.
Okay.
This direction to come back with a report with respect to alternated pa- or parking on, on streets in LaSalle.
Okay, so that was moved by Counsel Renault and seconded by Counsel DeJourley as well. All in favor for that report? That carries unanimously. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Militia. Thank you, Counsel Renault. Okay, thank you, Mr. Darling and Mr. Berger. Appreciate your comments. We now have another delegation for O'Mira Street, Tuttle Ave to the end, alternating parking. And Mr. Mara.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, first, uh, instead of going through the report, uh, this one is a bit unique. And I'd like to, uh, kind of explain how we got here tonight. Uh, there is a delegation who wishes to speak to this matter. So certainly, uh, I think it'd be appropriate after I do a quick introduction to hear from the delegation. Um, and then certainly after the delegation, uh, I could, I could do some closing remarks on, on how we can, uh, move this particular one forward. Uh, so a bit of history on this particular request. Uh, so, uh, I had said that we get these requests on a, on, on a one-off basis. Almost ninety-nine percent of the times, there is, um, a request for alternating parking. In this particular instance, there is already a, a prohibition on parking on Omira. Uh, for a number of years, it's been in place and for a number of good reasons. Um, so certainly that has been in place and, and the request was to get rid of the no parking altogether. So, uh, that was something that we looked at and we said, we don't want to get rid of the no parking, but we will implement alternating parking if that is, um, uh, pleasurable to, to the particular requester. Uh, so this request came in, in January of twenty twenty. Uh, we were going to bring this to council in April twenty twenty, but COVID happened and we weren't hearing delegation. So this, this item was kind of put on hold. And then we council decided that we were going to have, when we worked out the, uh, the matters on how to have delegations at council meeting, we, we scheduled these in for, uh, for, uh, uh, coming forward to council. So this report was prepared in November. Uh, when we went to prepare this report, um, we circled back to the original requested and asked if they still wished to proceed. Um, given the, given the light and circumstances of a potential rezoning at the corner of Omira and, and, and Malden. So we, the requester, original requester came forward at that time in November and said, let's proceed. He still wanted to proceed and that's hence why we're here tonight. Uh, so with that, the requester, uh, has self-identified Mr. Chin Duzi is, uh, is available. And, and I think he would like to address council on, on this particular matter. It is before council because we have provided public notice to everybody on the street. Uh, so this matter, uh, we wanted to make sure that this matter was dealt with appropriately as a, as a public agenda item and certainly as, as a item that was provided with notice for the people in the streets. With that, the delegation is probably appropriate to speak.
Thank you, Mr. Mara. Mr. Chin Duzi, welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Town Council. I, I'm speaking tonight with regards to the request I made for changes in the parking bylaw on Omira Street in LaSalle. After speaking to many of my neighbors and discussing the pros and cons of the parking situation on Omira, I decided to withdraw my request to have the parking changed on Omira Street at the present time. Sorry for the late notice and your understanding and thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Chin Duzi. Mr. Mara.
So with that council, uh, the report is before you tonight. There is a recommendation in there. Council, uh, has the opportunity to, uh, withhold the recommendation and bring that forward and or, uh, uh, deny the recommendation. And then if, by denying the recommendation, the, the no parking restrictions remain on Omira as, as per the request. Uh, so with, with that, uh, it's, I'm available for any additional council, uh, questions, um, if council wishes to speak further on this matter.
Just to be clear, Mr. Mara, so the recommendation for, in, in the, uh, agenda is to be approved. So you're saying now there's the option to approve it as what's in, I don't know if your recommendation is you want it approved or if you want it withdrawn as per Mr. Chin Duzi.
Currently, the bylaw states that there's no parking allowed on Omira. The request before you was to modify the no parking bylaw to put in alternating parking. So by denying the recommendation tonight in the report, puts this matter to bed and the no parking prohibition on Omira remains in place as per it, what is currently in the bylaw.
Perfect. Gotcha. Counselor Carrick.
So I know what we just requested for recommendation, the previous issue, would this street fall underneath that, uh, grand scheme of things for whole town?
Mr. Mara.
Uh, again, this is a local street. Uh, we would probably not look at this street because it is already prohibited. Uh, there is already full prohibition on parking. Uh, going forward, uh, there, there, there needs to be some good support to do a full prohibition on parking. Uh, the original, uh, prohibition on parking on Omira Street was a result of the Michigan Tavern, the overflow parking with Park Down, Omira Street. Um, so that was really, there was a commercial establishment that was really affecting the, the residential neighborhood. On those one-off situations, uh, we would potentially look at a prohibition of parking. Um, so if this had no, nothing on it, we would be looking at putting in alternating parking here. But because this one is already completely pro- uh, prohibition of parking on the street, it wouldn't fall into that recommendation. Uh, a- again, when I come forward with a report, um, relative to implementing alternating parking, that's all we'll be looking at is how we implement alternating parking. Any special request for fro- for prohibition and things of that nature will still have to come to council for, for formal approval of such things as that.
Okay, so then a follow-up. So down the road, there's a potential for some development there at the corner of the old Michigan site. So potential overflow versus no overflow, because I'm just throwing it at you now so that there would be no other impact. As we're worried about as opposed to a bar that was there?
Again, the way it currently sits and the way it's in the bylaw today, there will be no parking. And if council denies the request as, as the report, uh, or sorry, denies the recommendation in the report, prohibition of parking remains on Omira regardless of what is built on my, on Malden and Omira. They would not be able to have over full parking on, on Omira.
Are you good with that, Mr. Ca- Counselor Carrick?
I, I'm okay with it. I'm just a little confused by the, uh, so I'm sorry, Mr., I'm sorry.
Chin Duzi.
Duzi, you don't want parking on there or you want alternate parking?
Does not want parking there.
Okay.
Leave it the way it is.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, Deputy Mayor Malash and Counsel Renault.
Thank you, Mayor Ronnie. So I would like to recommend that we deny the, I'd like to deny the recommendation. I'd like to keep it as no parking because I do believe once that corner of Malden and Omira is developed, if we allow parking, it's just going to be patrons of that restaurant and that development, we're going to end up parking in front of these residents. So I'd like to keep it as no parking.
Okay, we have a mover. Do we have a seconder? Counsel DeJourley, on the motion, Counsel Renault, you had a question?
Um, not a question. I wanted to thank Mr. Chin Duzi. Um, much like the last uh, request that we just dealt with, you know, I mentioned how, uh, we've had people go out and do the work. You went out and did the work and you talked to your residents and you, you talked to your community and you got a feel for what everybody really wants. So I would like to thank you for doing that extra work a- and making it very clear as to, to what, uh, should be done here. And I will also support the, uh, denial.
Any other discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all in favor? One, two. Uh, that carries unanimously. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chin Duzi for your, uh, your, your time on this matter. Okay, no reports, no committee matters, information to be received are twenty twenty fourth quarter propping tax write-offs. Not a big amount, but Mr. Langlois, you're on. Anything you want to add?
Oh, nothing to add. Pretty simple. I'm here to answer any questions.
Counsel's pleasure. Deputy Mayor Malash and Counsel DeJourley, all in favor? No discussion required, that carries unanimously. Item G two. November twenty twenty financial statements and financial reports. Mr. Longwa.
Again, I'm here to answer any questions. Um, our supervisor of accounting, Chantel Anson, she's currently working on the year-end report. So uh, there's a lot of entries that are made in December. But, uh, there, um, there's nothing to be concerned about. Um, we have received some, some funding for the COVID-related items. And we're, we're hope, we're working on hopefully getting some more. So I'm, I'm available for any questions if there is a.
A computer glitch, I hear. I'm not getting our money yet.
Oh, apologize. Um, just, uh, we're, we're hopefully going to get some more funding. We're working on it with the, uh, with the, um, provincial government.
Good, good. Any questions to Mr. Longwa? Seeing none, counsel's pleasure. Moved by Counsel DeJourley, seconded by Counsel Carrick. Any discussion? All in favor? And that carries unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Longwa. Summary of reports to council. Wait a minute, I missed one. No?
Yes.
Towne LaSalle Financial Indicator Review. Sorry, Mr. Longwa.
One last one for me. Um, so this, this here, uh, is an annual report that's provided from the Ministry of Municipal Affairs and Housing. And basically, these are standard, uh, um, ratios that they, uh, calculate each year, um, based on our FIR that we submit. And they compare them to the various municipalities in Ontario. And then they also compare it to a standard, just to look at our risk factors, our financial risk factors. So, um, I'm happy to announce that we've, we've scored low on all of our risk factors. So it's just, um, kind of a, a good news story. And that's just the results of, you know, uh, years and decades of, uh, sound financial planning. So if there's any questions on this, I'd be happy to answer them.
Well, Mr. Longwa, usually when you score high, that's what you want. But this is like golf. You want to score low?
Exactly. That's the opposite.
Give us a grade, A, B, C?
Well, straight A's.
Straight A's. Good, good to hear. Any questions from council? Counsel's pleasure. Moved by Counsel Adichos Pagnolo, seconded by Deputy Mayor Malash, all in favor? That carries. Thank you very much, Mr. Longwa.
Thanks.
Now, summary of reports to council. Counsel Renault. Motion received. Seconded, Counsel Akpata, all in favor? That carries. Thank you very much. Bylaws. Three readings. All three readings, Deputy Mayor Malash and Counsel DeJourley, all in favor? That carries. Thank you very much. Council questions? It's a new year. We'll go with Counsel Akpata, Counsel Carrick and Counsel Renault.
Through your worship to the CAO, uh, just a question. I have been following the COVID delivery of vaccine in the province of Ontario through other work that I do. And I just wanted to ask Mr. Militia if we are prepared, should, because I don't know, should vaccines arrive in LaSalle to assist whichever entity is responsible for delivery of these vaccines in the municipality? And has he had an opportunity to offer assistance? Has anybody reached out to him? And do we have a cohesive twenty-four seven delivery plan for this, uh? Should we receive the vaccine instead?
Thank, thank you, Counselor, for the question. We, uh, we are part of a, a larger task force, uh, here locally, uh, that is charged with, uh, assisting, uh, I, I believe it's the health unit that is charged with the actual delivery of the vaccine and, and coordination of that. So we are, we have offered our support. Uh, we do have two members, our CEMC, which is our emergency, community emergency management coordinator, which is Chief Sutton, as well, as well as one of our alternates, uh, which is Mr. Uh, Mr. Ferraro, uh, are both involved with the committee, uh, with the task force to, uh, to offer any assistance that we, uh, that, that, that is needed to, with the delivery of vaccines, uh, to our resident, not only our residents, but to the residents of Windsor Essex. So uh, we have put that forward. Uh, unfortunately, I, again, the, the, the plans in place are, are starting to be developed, uh, currently. Uh, I think the first focus was getting into the, uh, long-term care homes and getting the, uh, and getting the, for some of the, uh, healthcare and, uh, long-term care home, uh, residents, uh, inoculated, uh, through that process. Uh, the, the attention is turning towards, uh, community-wide vaccination. Uh, it would appear that that will happen into, into the, in a few months. Uh, they're hoping that the vaccines will arrive to the province uh, sometime, uh, for the general public, uh, sometime in, uh, March, April, in terms of the first rollout, uh, that they'll have. Uh, so we are, uh, we are certainly, uh, putting, uh, our plan in place to, to assist in any way possible. Uh, we have offered that assistance to the task force. Uh, we're waiting to hear back from them. I know that they're, they're getting their feet under them right now in terms of developing those plans, but we're waiting to hear back from them. And we, we understand that, you know, we all have a role to play, uh, both as individuals, uh, in following the, uh, the edicts of, uh, the, uh, the health unit as well as the provincial government, but also as municipality in terms of assisting in any way possible. Uh, we do have a number of facilities, whether they be, you know, our, uh, our number of our, uh, operational facilities, the Volmer. Uh, we have facilities down on the wall waterfront. Uh, we have a number of facilities offer, to offer, uh, i- in case they do need, uh, our support. So we, we await uh, information from them. And, uh, hopefully, again, for everyone, I think I speak for everyone pretty much in the world, but certainly in our community here, uh, that, uh, we are anxiously awaiting the, the vaccine, uh, deployment. And, uh, right now, I believe that, uh, the issue is with supply, that it can't get here fast enough. Uh, and so once it starts getting here, we will be ready.
Thank you very much, Joe. I appreciate your answer and I hope that the public has heard what, uh, that you've come up with a plan, you've extended the hand of cooperation and that the municipality of the town of LaSalle is ready to work with whatever entities are going to help deliver the vaccine in our area. Thank you very much, your worship.
Thank you for the question, Counsel Akpata. Counsel Carrick.
Thank you, your worship. Through to Mr. Seleni if I can. Um, I understand that affordable income housing is, uh, hard to come by, especially with the price of, uh, land, especially in our region and the town of LaSalle where it's reaching an upwards of four thousand dollars a square foot to, uh, buy property and to build on. So I remember back in the early two thousands when, um, we took a tour of Toronto and it was more compact housing. Perhaps smaller lots, skiing your lungs. And, um, so that, is that something we can look at for the future? Understanding we don't own the property. But as you're saying, that's we can try to do or something we can look at that we haven't done in the past for a long time perhaps that we can do to move forward. So, uh, basically, a lot of the younger generation and some other people can actually maybe afford to buy a semi. That's maybe not quite as, uh, expensive in a smaller lot type thing. Is that something we can look forward to in a report or can you just make it a quick answer?
Uh, thank you, Counselor Carrick for the question. We certainly, uh, with the new official plan, we have, uh, provided direction and signals to the private sector that council and administration is supportive of a broad range of housing types. And certainly smaller lots is something that would be entertained positively. In the new greenfield area, uh, there is the ability to have single semis and townhouses uh, built throughout and with smaller lot sizes. And, uh, as part of retrofit, when the new zoning bylaw goes forward, uh, the province is now requiring all municipalities, including LaSalle, uh, to have regulations in place that would allow, uh, uh, second dwelling units, uh, as of right, uh, again, to provide more affordability, uh, across the region and across these parts of Ontario. So we do have that, uh, in, in the new official plan. And you'll see, uh, regulations in the new bylaw that's coming forward in the spring that will support that and, uh, give the positive signals to the private sector to bring on the, uh, more affordable units in the community.
Okay, thank you. And also, would, would there's, would we be looking at some, some kind of help outside of not having the properties? Like, would we be not offsetting some stuff or maybe helping them more or less with certain things? I'm just.
We, we, uh, council has for, uh, now several years and we've extended that, uh, till June of, uh, two thousand and, uh, twenty-two. We provide the waiver for apartment units. So any apartment unit that's built in the municipality, uh, do not have to pay development charge. So again, that's a way to, uh, provide support to, uh, individuals. provide support to individuals so that units will come on board at a more affordable rate.
Okay, thank you very much.
Counselor Carrick, I'm sorry. Thank you, Counselor Carrick. Counselor Renault.
Thank you, your worship. My question is kind of along the same vein. I have had a few residents in the past that have asked me about tiny houses. It seems like the city of Windsor is now starting to develop a program with a few tiny houses that are smaller than what the building code currently addresses. And I'm just wondering if we could get a report back from administration as to how these things work, how they work in other municipalities. I would imagine it has a lot to do with access from alleys and things like that. And maybe it doesn't work for us, but I'd like to know a little bit more about it as it seems to be an affordable option that may be able to be utilized in the town that is much like the granny suites and things like that, but a detached unit on the same property. If we could get a, a report back on, on the feasibility and how it works, I would appreciate that.
Thank you, Mr. Militia.
Certainly, again, thank you for the question. And again, both to Counselor Carrick and Counselor Renault. We do recognize that, as Mr. Salani indicated, that I know, again, a lower price point is, is hard to come by in LaSalle. And, and certainly there are options out there. We can provide the report for members of council with respect to how smaller units can work and what some of the, you know, the pros and cons of that are. But we are really at the whim of, or sorry, at the mercy of the development community in terms of what they want to develop. You know, again, we, we are not developers. We create the environment for development. And we can incent, we can provide some incentives as we have for smaller scale developments or smaller price developments. But really, we are at the, at the mercy of, of the development community when it comes to how they develop. And, and as Counselor Carrick stated in his introduction, a, a lot of it is based on the, the land price and kind of evolves from there. So certainly we can provide the information, but unfortunately, there's only so much we can do without really stepping into. And again, that would be a very unusual case, stepping into the whole development game ourselves. That would be something a bit out of the box, if you will. But we are, we, we can provide that information for members of council.
Thank you, Minister Militia. Any other council questions? Statements by council members? Reports from committees? Notices of motion? Confirmatory bylaw, first reading, Counselor Renault and Deputy Mayor Malaish, all in favor, that carries. Second reading, Counselor Akpata and Counselor Adichio Spagnolo, all in favor, that carries. And third and final reading, Counselor Carrick and Counselor DeJourley, all in favor, that carries. Thank you. You have your schedule of meetings, meeting adjourned. Everybody have a stay.